No place to put it.
Right.
I mean, there's other area that this could go.
Couldn't we go?
I mean, I understand, is that that one tree?
We could look at changing the orientation of the pool, flipping it 90 degrees and moving it to the north so that it's more even with the side of the house. That'd be a possibility. Relocating the propane tank isn't going to be that hard.
No.
So that's a possibility.
Do it every day.
Yeah. I would like to speak just a bit to the notion that screening is somehow would be inconsistent with moorlands and moorland's habitat.
Can we do this if we already closed the hearing?
We can reopen it.
They're answering our question.
I'm just... Sorry.
I think you're looking in the right direction, which was why I mentioned trying to turn the pool perpendicular or something to get it more in the lawn, more away from the concerning issues and the moorland. But then it may put it in more view. You know, but I mean, I think that's something that would need to be...
Revegetation has some benefit.
And I don't know what the land council feels about, or land bank feels about offsets. You know, if we utilize this...
Trade off.
...land, do we, is it okay if we offset over there? I don't know what the behind is on that.
I'm sure. Through you, ma'am chair. So Ms. Mullen's comments, I think, are very compelling with respect to, if you look at the satellite image, you can almost see where there's the transition zone from the evergreen material, tall tree-like material, even at three cut weed, to the, which would be between three and five, so to the north of this.
Yeah.
So this is obviously a winter image, and it looks to me, if looking at the image from Google Satellite now, that two, three cut weed, that image was taken before, that really filled in. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is there's almost like a line here where you have evergreen tree material that extends up almost to a cut weed. And if their pool were moved north as far as possible into that line, I think that that would be helpful.
Would you stand up at maybe...
Sure.
I see what he's saying.
So, and this takes into consideration the other comments we made before with respect to...
And it would be away from this...
With this area here...
Transition.
Is almost like a line.
I'm sorry that it's real far yards.
Where the pool were moved back in here somewhere, as opposed to being over here somewhere.
And then, is it possible to put up a Google image of that? Because you can see how it's grown in.
Yeah.
From that.
It's pretty substantial.
And there's a ton of screenage to the north of their lot that would completely screen it from Heller's Way.
Yeah.
And move it away from the more sensitive parts of the moorland.
Yeah. And I think if we were able to pull...
I know they don't like that location, but it just is...
It addresses a lot of the issues.
Can I just wrap up?
Yep.
So, my suggestion would be if we could pull up the Google.
Yep.
The second is that, that location, I think, fits more into the transition area. I'm not suggesting it's a perfect solution, but it certainly seems more palatable. And then the other concepts that came up, I'm still supporting the idea of addressing the pump out, addressing some aspect of reclamation to a different area on the lot that, again, it's consistent with. So if we're moving four or five trees here, we're putting them in an area to the north where there's four, where trees are already growing versus putting them someplace where it's grasslands or rare species. And the other comments that were made by board members, I would support. Thank you.
Another thing too, Sarah, that, that original location, that's a heck of a long hose for a truck. To reach all the way over there, that's like 250 feet away or more. I don't think they have a hose like that. I mean, it's funny, looking at this Google thing, I mean, we've done this before, so here we are, another new thing. I mean, look at the screening, that's natural. If we moved it to the north, it's, I mean, that's where I'd put it. I understand there's probably some reasons for decks and doors and, but, you know.
We're happy to move it.
I mean, I'm just, look, I'm just trying to find some kind of medium thing here, you know. I can hear, I hear the writing on the wall in my ears what's happening. So, we already have pools out here, so I don't want to see it just denied just because of where they wanted to put it. And agreeing with the puck, truck thing, I didn't think of that till just this minute, that's a heck of a, it would be easy to do from the north because driveway is right there. You know, this is like Maticat, you know? We gotta look at other things besides, you know, I mean, I know it's not our approval on that zoning board, but I'm just saying the same thing. So, I'm sorry I closed the public hearing. Well, whatever. I'm sorry we closed it.
We got big shoulders, we can share the responsibility.
So, I think, Steve, you sounded like you had the beginning of the motion. Do you want...
Who's on this? This is a special permit. Who's next on this one?
Steve.
Oh, okay.
I mean, my suggestion would be, if we want to go to, move to a motion, is that it would, it's a little different here than HDC because there's a month between applications. So we kind of need to pin down a location that we support. I mean, I'm suggesting to the north, relative to its current location, it could be further behind the house, or it could be more into that open space that's there. I think the further north it goes, the better. And there's, you know, less clearing involved, and we're not disturbing the existing vegetation, both anything that's within the low-growing area or the trees. But if we're in that, the grassland to this, somewhere in here, I think would be more appropriate certainly than here.
Yeah.
And especially with potential issues with easements and screening. And then the topic would, so it would be relocate to the north. Where do we, do we have a sense, can I get a sense of you, from you guys, so I can draft the motion where we'd want it?
What, how far do we have to go with that?
I would think we could...
With through staff?
Let that be through staff. Leslie, would you feel comfortable with that?
It sounds like you all are talking about sort of the northwest corner of the house, like in the vicinity of, of that.
Yeah.
So, I, just as, for me, I would not be willing to approve it unless it's in this area.
All right, so I'm going to float the motion that the, what would be relocated, pool and related equipment and coping and materials would be relocated to, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the site plan as opposed to Google, to the north, northwest portion of the grassed area of the lot, and that there would subject through, working through staff, there would be conditions on, typical type conditions on pump out with respect to conservation count, commissions, typical pump out requirements, and that any, and that in addition, the pool would not be visible from any publicly traveled way at the time of inspection or the time of sign-off or thereafter. Was there anything else?
I think that those were the...
They're sensitive to the, to the...
And the...
Non-grass areas.
Revegetation.
Yeah, and if any, yeah. So, any, anything, any area disturbed by construction other than the grassed area would be proportionally replicated to the north of the grass area. So is, that, that would be the part of the motion. But the reasoning behind that is that it would, it would not be in the south area where the grasslands and the rare species are.
This is benefit construction.
Yeah.
Which, you know, is all part of this.
And...
Ms. Altter, is that clear enough? Do you want to comment further?
I would be okay with it. I mean, you cleared it up for me, you put it there.
Okay, so...
Is that relatively clear motion?
It's clear, and thanks to modern technology, we can always watch the video if we need to.
Awesome. Thank you. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let, give them another minute here.
Yeah.
Happy with it?
Yes.
I think it might make more sense for you to reopen the public hearing and continue this for a month and allow us to come in with a revised site plan so that everyone sees exactly what we're doing.
Sure. You're fine with this.
Okay, can we...
So, I'll rescind my second, and we'll, I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that after I rescind my motion.
Rescinded the second, oh, whatever.
No, no, you're good.
I probably made that up.
You're good.
I don't know if that's even possible. I just want to continue.
So you're seconded.
I'm glad they're wanting to do that, so that's good.
Yes, very helpful.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that also means it'll be continued till the July meeting.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's wisdom and for the property owners. We appreciate your consideration.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to probably try to stifle our most to close public hearings a little bit.
Yeah, I picked up on that. We need to, yeah.
Yep.
Look at that. I sense things sometimes. It's not quite time, but it's hard to figure out.
Now we have number 40-19, the Roberts Collection, Fort Chestnut Street, 11 India Street, 29 and 31 Center Street. Ms. Altter?
Yes, all right, Altter, the applicant.
You get all the interesting...
What is that?
I don't know. I've asked GIS.
The yellow street.
I felt I was trying to block.
That's the subway, yeah.
It's some lit, I...
So... I'm not quite sure that's where Center Street's being relocated.
My apologies.
I'm not sure. Okay, well, let's not pay any attention to that.
It's an older pen.
Yeah. So, this seems a lot more daunting than it actually is.
I don't know.
This is four existing properties that you're probably familiar with. The gatehouse being the newest one on Chestnut Street, the manor house at the corner of Chestnut and Center, the meeting house on Center, and then the Roberts house at the corner of India and Center. Currently, these properties are operated, have, they have been operated for the past few years by the same owner-operator, but they're operated under, I think, 11 separate pieces of zoning relief. A lot of them are, it's all zoning permits issued by the zoning board of appeals. There is the MCD that covered the property at the corner of Chestnut Street, and the gatehouse that's been modified a few times. It's kind of a hodgepodge. So when we were talking about coming in here and making this application, many of the things that we're proposing are things that we can just do as a matter of right, but it seems as if it makes sense at this point to combine the properties, clean up all the permitting, because honestly, when you go back and try to figure out what's approved and what you can do and what you can't do, you have to kind of piece together these 11 approvals. I don't know if you tried looking at them, but it's pretty confusing. And even the nomenclature is completely different, so you, half the time you don't know what building the relief is even talking about. So it seemed to make sense, since a lot of those permits actually aren't even applicable anymore, to kind of start with a clean slate and just do one big MCD for this property. So that's why you're seeing all four buildings on one application. Maybe that was a mistake, but I think ultimately it makes sense to treat this as kind of a campus as opposed to four discrete buildings. The changes that are being proposed, for the most part, are pretty minor. For manor house, gatehouse, and Roberts house, there's just interior renovations and cleanup. Some room, some rooms are being moved around. The net result, given what we're doing, is that the number of hotel units, now a hotel unit is like a suite or, or double room, the number of hotel units is actually being reduced from 62 to 61. So there's a net reduction there. The total number of actual hotel rooms will increase by one, and it's going from the 65 that are allowed under the current permitting to 66. That's what's happening to the three, to the, basically those three corner buildings. The major changes are happening to the meeting house, which is the center building, the one that's just on Center Street. There's a connection currently between the Roberts house and the meeting house that's being eliminated and just turned into a deck. That building itself is going to be picked up and put on a new foundation. It's, I don't know if you've been in it, but it doesn't meet most known codes. And that's been kind of a hindrance to the people who have been operating in there, to be honest. Be put back down on a foundation. There's a small addition that's coming out to the, I guess that would be the north, and a portion of the back is being demoed and then reconstructed, and there's a small addition there. At the end of the day, net, the net increase in ground cover is 1.4% or 279 square feet, which is a pretty, I think, a pretty small number, particularly given that we're in the CDT that allows 75% ground cover. We know we're, we know we're close to that. We're hovering right around, I think, 51.3%, 3%. So in the meeting house, currently, there are two restaurants and three retail spaces on the first floor, and then there are guestrooms and other living space on the other floors. At the end of this project, what we intend to do is eliminate the three retail stores, combine the two restaurants into one big restaurant. We'd have one restaurant with two commercial, it's technically one kitchen, but they call it two commercial kitchens because they're on different floors. A total of 80 interior seats and 70 exterior seats. That's a total increase in seating in the interior of 24 seats from 56 to 80. And kind of an unknown on the patio because although there's a lot of patio usage there, I don't have a great count on what that is. Just sort of, the only piece of relief that we really need that's unusual at all is the rear yard setback because in the CDT, you have a five-foot rear yard setback and a zero side yard and front yard setback. When we combine these properties, the gatehouse property, which was built to have a side yard setback, would now have a rear yard setback. So we're asking for a slight waiver of the rear yard setback for that, to keep that gatehouse property where it is. The Roberts house, I think everything else just stays the way it is. It's all pre-existing, non-conforming. The buildings are, are old. You'll note that Roberts house, I think, was built in the 1800s, and I went back to all the Sanborn maps, and it's just kind of been solidly there. Same thing up on the, up on the other corner with the manor house. With me tonight is John Bracken, our project surveyor, Matt McKeckern, the project manager at Emeritus. There are project architects, and I have some principals up there in the back, Terry Sanford, Brad Guedi, Tyler Hardy, Jason Brown, and Art Construction Manager, Rich Craddock. So we're all here to answer whatever questions you might have. We obviously understand we're in the core district, so we know that we'll be under a strict no-construction during the summertime prohibition. Our hope is to kind of hit the ground running in the fall and to have everything up and back on track by next June. That's probably a little ambitious, but we think we can at least give that a shot. We understand and have tried to meet with as many neighbors as possible. I know there are some letters of concern, and maybe some neighbors here, oh yeah, there are some neighbors here who will want to speak. We, there are also letters in support, I think, from at least three neighbors. One of the concerns that we're hearing, of course, is noise. And the only thing I can really say about the noise is that when you have as many hotel rooms on a property as this property does, no one has a better incentive to keep the noise under control than the actual owners and operators of this property, because no one is going to want to stay at the Roberts house, manor house, and gatehouse, and in the rooms that are up, still going to be up above the meeting house, if it's an off-the-hook situation. That just isn't what's planned. What's planned is a, is a dining room that can, a restaurant that can actually serve some of the restaurant patrons and bring some business into downtown, which I think is kind of been the goal of the master plan, to keep downtown vitalized. I think we saw a great rebuilding and rebirth of Broad Street over the last, say, 10 years, and we're hoping to kind of join in that and make this part of Center Street very nice as well, and a place where people want to come and walk. And that's another good reason to have the property treated as a whole, so that we can deal with some of these internal walkways in a more formal way than has currently been dealt with, because I know that there's a, kind of a cut through that people do informally now from Chestnut to Center. And it would be nice to have that more formally laid out and walking ability within the site. And I, I don't want to just keep talking. No, no. I mean, there's so much to say about this, you know, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Sarah, I had a, I spent some time going through the prior special permits, and you're right, it's confusing, very confusing.
Yeah.
But I did notice through those special permits that there were certain things, and I don't, I won't necessarily describe them as conditions, but there were certain things that were at least discussed and may be conditions. But generally, those, I'll just summarize, and I want to talk about three things. One's employee housing, two, traffic and congestion, and three, noise. First one, employee housing. Obviously, we're concerned in Nantucket about housing for employees, and I believe there is at least some provision, maybe, it may have been a condition, for at least one, maybe manager's unit or employee housing on, on this property. Is that correct?
There's a manager's apartment in the basement of the Roberts house that's remaining. There's a manager's apartment in the manor house, which is also remaining. And I don't think there's one at gatehouse, is there? No. So there are currently two manager's apartments on site.
And those are staying?
And those are staying.
Okay. Two, traffic and congestion. I noticed in some of the prior, well, first of all, there's underground parking in, presently, and I think that was a requirement of one of the prior permits, maybe the most recent one.
2007.
Yeah. Is that going to change?
Well, I think...
Sure. Never used it.
What, what happened with that underground parking, what happened with parking in general, is that the parking requirement in downtown was eliminated. So there is currently no parking, parking requirement. So a lot of the conversation about how much, how many parking spaces you have just doesn't, doesn't apply anymore, and those portions of those permits don't really apply.
Why, why would you say that? To the extent that it was a condition of a special permit, why would you say they don't apply anymore?
Because if you don't need the relief that the special permit granted you, now in some cases it would still apply, but in other cases it wouldn't. Like if you don't, if you no longer need the relief for parking, and you don't need the relief for anything else, then the relief itself, and I think there's an opinion of town council out there, the relief goes away.
Maybe.
But anyway, our, our plan would not be to keep that parking down below the gatehouse. It doesn't, it doesn't work. My understanding is it's never really been used.
I can understand that, but, in any event, there was also a requirement or the provision for two onsite pull-off on Chestnut Street. Some of that related to, I think, sort of people checking in, but also that that's where presumably deliveries were supposed to be made, so delivery trucks would not be on the street. Do you plan on re-keeping those two spaces?
Are we keeping the parking? Yeah, we're keeping those.
That's all new.
Okay. So that's the pull-off that you see up there on Chestnut Street?
On Chestnut, yeah.
Yeah.
And some concern about the tree that's up there. I, is that any change to the tree that's going to be up there?
No, we're not touching the tree, right?
Okay. Okay. And I guess generally, and I'm sure other people will speak to this, but noise would certainly be a concern. Number of people who live in the residential areas across Center Street and near those have expressed concern. So I'd like you to talk a little bit about what is planned in terms of indoor and outdoor restaurant, for instance. Do you anticipate any live music?
No.
No live music, okay. And hours of operation in terms of outside service? I assume there's food service outside.
Yes, food service outside. Well, we'd like to have that be just like any other restaurant in town, and we'd be certainly self-policing that, our, you know, keep our, keep our guests, our in-guests happy. It's, and then, of course, if you want to have conditions on keeping the doors and windows shut, I mean, that's, I think, a condition that's downtown all the time.
But the intent is with the 70 seats outside is to have, I presume, dinner service?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So that service would be going on, presumably, till at least 10 o'clock?
Yes.
There was also a requirement in, and I think it's referred to in the zoning bylaw, but it's also, also was mentioned in one of the prior permits, about 30% open space?
That has been eliminated in the CDT.
Okay.
We probably need it because we're only at 50 point, 51.3%, but I don't even think you probably calculated it. Did you, Don? No.
Okay.
But we, you know, we certainly could make that calculation for you if you wanted.
No.
Okay. Dave?
Thanks. I think Fritz covered a lot of things. Just a big concern about the impact on the local businesses during construction, and if you guys have put any thought into how you're going to mitigate that.
Yeah, we were thinking of putting in, together a plan of how we would deal with parking and during construction, because it's going to be, that's, that's clearly the time of impact.
That's a giant problem, yeah.
I mean, that would be the case even if we were just renovating the building and not doing anything.
Oh, yeah, no, 100% agree.
Yes, to have some sort of satellite parking area where, so that not all the trucks are coming into town and parking would definitely be part of the plan.
Great, yeah. Because, I mean, you know, on a lot of these sites, you know, I mean, it's basically cost of doing business for these contractors. They're going to park their car somewhere all day and just take the tickets, so.
Right. Right, I know. And we want, you know, obviously, we want to be a good neighbor. We'd like to be able, we're not going to be able to stay open the entire time under construction, but we'd like to be able to reopen at some point, you know, we don't want the place to completely shut down.
Is the intent to be a year-round restaurant?
Yes.
And three meals?
Yes.
Nice.
That's it for me.
Yeah. The longest-running planning board member now, 2007. That was unbelievable, Sarah. The shovel for the night space. The shovel for the ninth space, for that ninth parking space underground. You got the shovel out to make another space and there's only been a motorcycle down there. You know, but that was the second worst decision ever. The first was, was Annie and the T's parking lot that screwed up the whole street for delivering, still does to this day. And at least it's not something that is exterior. So, you know, that's what really drove the CDT, other than Broad Street. And, you know, I challenge anyone to question the Graden House, what it looks like now versus what people were saying at the beginning. So what I'll say that we did with the Graden House is there were a lot of, there was sort of that whole one-year, let's try it thing, and you were the representative for that. We didn't have the outside seating on the deck, or whatever we're calling it, on Northwater Street.
Right.
And we had it, at the beginning, we had it, only people live, staying there could eat there, as I recall.
That's correct. You couldn't pay for food there.
And I was like, well, they're not making any money on that. So then it slowly started to become part of us. All of a sudden, the Graden House went from Dexter Shell Shop to the Graden House. And now we think it's been here for 100 years. Doesn't it, it looks like it has, doesn't it? And, well, it does. It does look like it's been here for a long time. And this kind of stuff is going to continue to happen, hopefully, one at a time. And that's one of the more important things I want to bring up. Broad Street was under construction for two years, essentially, a year and a half. And it was, it was difficult.
Right. Right, not just because of Graden House?
No, the other, I'm talking about Noblets.
Twenty-one.
Right.
Twenty-one Broad and the.
Right. And also the little thing, whatever it is now, at the.
Bookworms?
No, that was late earlier, the.
Brotherhood?
No, the.
Other hotel.
The Mooney Building thing.
Oh, the Mooney Building, right, right.
Whatever that is called, they changed the name a little bit.
The Connery Center.
Something, and then whatever. So all this stuff was going on at the same time.
Right.
For the most part.
And White Herring.
White Herring was, yep, we had that too. So, you know, I, I'm in town every day. For 32 years, I've been down in these buildings and doing stuff and seeing things. This is, this is part of us. And I think we need to start out with some conditions, and I'm not sure that we're going to be ready to approve this tonight, that's for sure, is thinking a little bit along the lines of the Graden House, this is just a bigger project, but we have such existing use.
It's actually smaller than Graden House.
Well, but Graden House, what I mean is, had a building, Dr. Collins' building, just sitting there for 40 years, and there was really nothing going on in that property except paying taxes. That's about it.
Right.
So this is an existing operation of, in different ways. I mean, I didn't know there were two restaurants. I mean, are they really, would you really call it a restaurant? I mean, I know that one is, but kind of, you know. So either way, I think.
It's how it's used, I mean, it's how it's permitted, I don't know.
I know, it's kind of not, but that's all right. So the outside seating, I think, is a big one we have to look at, especially with all the controversy we've had with whatever we're calling the JC this year, the steak thing, whatever it is. You know, with the TVs, you've been around for all this, so you know. So you got to give it a year to ease into these things, so everybody gets used to it. Now proprietors, reading some of these letters, proprietors is, for all intents and purposes, I don't like to call it a new restaurant, but what was there for years before that was nothing like this. Now you have, you know, a real operation that's operating correctly with, you know, and I haven't heard any complaints about noise there. Not that I would, I'm just saying I haven't heard of any, not saying that there hasn't been. The Gate House is new, is that, you know, today's modern whatever use, has there been any noise complaints? I mean, I don't know. I don't know if there has, but it seems to be work.
It's just people sleeping.
Seems to be work in the way it's been working. You know, just, as far as the parking and of work trucks, and Dave mentioned to me earlier about the summer work thing, and I explained to him that this is a condition that the planning board puts on, and it's just for everyone's knowledge, we do not have a bylaw that says you can't work outside June 15th to September 15th. It's a condition that's put on MCDs by us. It could be June 20th. Doesn't have to be the 15th, it can be different dates, whatever works. We did for Dreamland, added a couple weeks because they had scaffolding in the middle of the road. So, I mean, this is, this is what we do. I mean, we just have to work at it and come up with some really good conditions for the, at least, you know, a trial run for some of it that may be contentious on the exterior and noise issues. So, that's it, I may have shared for now.
Okay. Others, I'm just going to go down the row for Fritz, you spoke, Steve.
Yeah, I would just suggest, through your men, I'm sure it would be a good opportunity to update, and it may be the sheet one of two that was missing.
Oh.
But I think that was from civil engineering. Just outdoor lighting, landscaping, these are minor details, a lot has been covered already.
I meant to say, totally my mistake about sheet one, sheet one is supposed to be an existing conditions plan, and I have no idea how this 10-year-old plan snuck in there. So ignore, the only thing that's helpful about sheet, what you currently have as sheet one, is that it does have some soil information and drainage stuff. Otherwise, you can ignore that, and by the next meeting, I will have appropriately submitted the existing conditions plan. Mr. Bracken is going to be also coming up with the drainage plan. Yeah, and we've looked at Ed Pesci's comments and we're fine with all of them. We'll be addressing those between now and the next meeting.
And then the only other comment was, those items I mentioned are from the MCD guidelines from 2002. It just might be helpful to go through, as it was a staff recommendation. Go through and make sure that each of those are ticked off and then indicate that everything that's supposed to be submitted has been. Thank you.
I just want to add something. Sorry, Sarah. Coordinated review issues, you know, Dawn's going to be working on, I mean, is this an area that has, still has orangeberg and clay tile and, you know, I don't know. What's in that little block? David Gray probably has some knowledge. And also, we'll talk about loading zone, stuff that I always wanted to fix, but I don't know if we can do it with this. We weren't able to do it with the Graden House, still a mess, so we'll talk about that later.
A lot of those details, I think, we're going to find during construction. And, you know, we're going to have to obviously check the sewer lines and replace them if we have.
What has been, I don't know if that was part of phase one B, or what was been done down there, or what hasn't been done.
I don't know of anything that's been done on that building, you know, recently. They probably do have the old lines that probably may need to be replaced when we get into it.
Okay.
Lidero Campbell?
I just have some silly little things. So I noticed that one of the, what seemed to me a pretty big change is it's going from a guest house to a hotel, and I'm sort of wondering what the purpose of that is.
The only difference between a guest house and a hotel. Well, I should look at the bylaw, but I think it's the commercial kitchen.
So is, I believe you said there's 81 bedrooms?
Sixty, 61.
61 bedrooms? So is a lot of the, the restaurant and this development meant to provide eating for the people who are staying at the hotel?
Well, that's, that's certainly, that's certainly part of it, but that's not, that's not exclusively intend, it's not exclusively intended to be just the people at the hotel.
I guess I'm, apparently the young woman has a little concern about this, but we're losing three retail spaces here.
Right.
And it does not look like they're being proposed to be anywhere else.
No.
And so I'm a little concerned about that for both the retail owners and the downtown area. This is, this is a building that has commercial space that isn't owned by NIR, so I think that has some value to it. And the other thing for the down, the below parking, trucks could go in there.
No, no, they couldn't.
You hit your head on the ceiling just walking under there.
Well, it looks.
Couple Mini Coopers, maybe.
Yeah.
I have one that I think is probably a fairly large one, Sarah. This is adding 96 restaurant seats to downtown, right?
No, well, it's adding 24 interior seats, and then it's adding some number of exterior.
Okay, your chart says 56 interior seats and patio seating, which we don't know what that is.
We don't know what the patio seating is. We know it's 56 inside seats.
Right, but be that as it may.
So it's 24 interior seats and something between zero and 70 patio seats.
So have you considered, even though, in my opinion, unfortunately, we don't expect parking to be provided downtown, I think we're killing downtown for the lack of a system there. I know we're talking about urging people to take the bus and Uber and all sorts of other things, but it would seem to me with that large an undertaking, it would be very wise to come up with a plan maybe shared with others for some sort of satellite VIP valet parking and that it might, you might have the core, given the scale of what you're doing, and others might join in with you. So it seems to me, and I know how civic-minded you are and everything else, that you probably have not failed to think about some of those things since you're, you see the town and you're the moderator and you know more than I do about many things. But it just seems to me that's a real risk, both a risk to the town at large, but a risk to the success of this operation if there isn't some kind of strategy about parking. You may pull people from other restaurants and everything, but. I just would ask you, implore you, if there's any way to be imaginative about that, it really would, it's like the yacht club does certain things with their more remote parking. You'll have, people will flock to your restaurant if there were some way that, that were easier compared to some of the other options, but particularly if it's lunch and dinner and breakfast and whatever the scale of it seems to me to be potentially unlike anything that has happened downtown lately.
Right. Well, I mean, a couple things. First of all, the more, the more people you have coming to downtown, the better it is for all the businesses. And I think at least.
Well, if, if they come, if they can park.
If they come, right. And I, and I think they will, and I think people are good about figuring that out, but we're going to have to be creative about figuring out ways to deal with it as well. We're obviously going to have to do, you know, we didn't mention it, but nerd passes for the employees and, and all of that. And of course, encourage all of the in-guests, I think is currently done, not to be bringing their cars to, you know, Nantucket's a walking destination, particularly when you're staying downtown at one of these locations, walking is, you know, it's the only, if I was visiting and I was staying, that's what I would do.
Or you'd bring a car.
Get my bag up from the boat and that would be it. Take the shuttle to the beach and.
Well, do you think that'll work?
I do.
You're an optimist, I think.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I've worked in town for.
No, I know.
So many years, and I just know that people.
But there's a lot riding on it with the scale of operation and for the people trying to make it work, it just.
Right.
It, it's, it's there to be dealt with is all.
I mean, it's an interesting thing because I looked at, just to see what the parking impact would have been had, had we had the old bylaw in place with one space. I think it was one space for every eight restaurant seats in the core, right? One for eight. So that's three spaces for the interior and, you know, let's say half of that, say 35.
It's embarrassing when you start doing.
So that's another four or five spaces. So it would have been a net gain of, say, seven to eight parking spaces. But when you do away with the retail, you're doing away with more than eight spaces. So if the parking bylaw had been in effect, we wouldn't have needed any parking relief to do this because it would have been a net wash.
Well, that's one way to look at, another way to look at it is, can people park downtown and what do they do if they're trying to go downtown? So I don't, I don't mean to ask you to answer it now, it was more just a plea that I hope you're thinking about it. If we're ready to be open to the public, are there citizens here who'd like to address this matter? Yes, please come and give your name if you would and your address. Hello?
I apologize for my English not very well, but I try my best. I am Cielo Masters. I live in Seven India Street, close to the Roberts House. The building, been there for almost 50 years. I've been in that building for 25 years. I was married with Delvin Masters, who passed away almost four years ago. I live in the second floor of the building. I'm running now Craft Masters and it's for.
No, you're fine. You're doing well.
It's nothing to you with the.
No, I know. If, if you want to take a breath, we can come back a little bit later.
It's nothing to.
Yes.
Pick up, my name is Keetia, go. I represent the Masters. You'll see a letter that I provided, that gave more points that you can look at later, I'm not going to go over it now. But for you to know, the Masters home, it's their only home, and it abuts the proposed outdoor seating area on the south, southerly side of the Meeting House. As you can see, the brick patio with the circle around it, which is a drainage from right in that area. And then her house is right over to the right. That's, yeah, over to the right.
The other one, right there, yep.
And so the bedroom and the living room overlooks pretty much where the outdoor seating is going to be on the southerly side. And that's just totally unacceptable for what the board should do of not increasing a non-conformity and, and causing more noise to be allowed in an area. Of course, you know, the quality of life and the reduction of value of the home is certainly a factor that the board should take into consideration. You didn't have the opportunity, but going back to 1980, Don DeMarco converted his residence into a restaurant and promised the board then, no outdoor seating. 2010 came back, he had a buyer, time to, outdoor seating again was not allowed. One of the main opponents of outdoor seating at DeMarco's at Nine India was Michael O'Reilly, the owner of the Roberts Collection, who said, as guests, everybody else who lives around there will be disturbed by outdoor seating. So DeMarco's does not have outdoor seating. Now down the street on the corner, on an intersection, like the boarding house, they have outdoor seating, but it's tucked into an intersection. This is different, as another neighbor will tell you about, you know, they, they live around there and it would be just an increase in their being disturbed by the noise of the neighbors. There's B&Bs, room rentals and others that are just. There's B and Bs, room rentals, and others that are just trying to enjoy a quiet night. Indoor seating has a lot of seats, but, and it's not a small restaurant. I don't know whose welfare would be promoted to have outdoor seating. I don't see the neighbors gaining from it. And even the residents in the hotel, in the hotel certainly would be less likely to be returning guests. That's, of course, the current owner's concern, but it's still one bad experience on Nantucket. They don't come back to Nantucket, no matter where the experience may be. So we, we have an obligation even to our transient sleepers. Certain letters in support may not give reasons for allowing an increase in noise. And I don't think they do. And whether or not it comes from people who actually sleep nearby is a question to look at for those letters. Certainly that patio to the south that faces the neighbors has to be eliminated. Even to have impervious surface so they can have emergency exit, fine. But to have a patio, you know, there's going to be seats on it and then noise. People having, you know, I think it was going to be a captain's table or something for the chef's table, which, you know, is entitled to a good time on their vacation. But inside would be a lot better with the windows protected from sound. The outside area, as we will see in my letter, has requests for certain mechanical devices that have advanced to keep noise from spreading. You know, surrounding the outdoor motors and fans and having certain types of fans and motors reduce the noise as well. No one wants and no one should be subjected every night to patio drinking, party noise outside of their bedroom and living room windows. So please do not allow this harm to be done to the Masters and others living back there and deny that part of the application that provides for outdoor seating. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I can stop for a second just two minutes. I am just now, I'm sorry for this.
No, don't be sorry. No, don't be sorry.
But yes, like I said, we've, we've been there almost, David was there almost for fifty years. He built all the house from his own hands. The building is very much to my heart. I come to die there. I plan to pass the building to Philo and Philo hopefully pass to the kids and the kids to the new generations. I really working very hard to maintain the building to honor my husband. That's, that's my life right now, which is, 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 is honor my, my husband. And this is what keep me going. So I plan to be there all my life. So like you see there in, in the proposal, my room is very close to the patio, who is in the side of the Robert House and the meeting house. So the, if, I don't know how I can maybe point them.
Over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much if you're looking at.
Yes, I can show you with this.
Oh.
So yes, so this is the path to the proposal. And this is proprietary, that go to here. So my property is start here and go to here. My room is here. My bedroom where I nestle is right here. So from here to here is no much difference. It's so close. So any noise they produce there can go to my, my, and I have to run in the business too. I have to rest and I nestle. So please not permit they pass anything now. They are no chairs, no nothing, no social nice area. She's only people who walk and nothing because that can't really change, drastically change my life when I already, I already been changed.
Thank you for being with us and being so eloquent.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
No, you did very, very well. Hello? Could you tell us your names?
Hello, um, yes, my name is Darcy Creach Morelli and this is my husband Scott Morelli. And I have been living downtown on Federal Street since nineteen ninety-six, year round, a year round resident. And I'm really concerned about the outdoor seating. Really most concerned about the seating on the south side where that circle is. My bedroom is right, our bedroom is right to the right of that. And we have a, we have a patio in the backyard. Our dogs are back there. I know, first of all, I know that my dogs are going to bark. Like if there are people out in the back, he's going to be barking all day long. I've had complaints from the Robert House about my dog barking before and it's going to be, it's going to be bark fest. I will say that the proprietors are an amazing neighbor. I have never had one complaint about them. And the reason why is because the things that, I don't know, did you read the letter that we sent? Just the conditions that they abide by, which is like having their windows shut. They've got no live music. There's no music outside. There's no outdoor seating. All their exhaust equipment is insulated. It's in the letter, but it's all the things that make, they're, they're an amazing neighbor as far as a restaurant goes. You know, on the other hand, like the boarding house, I love Seth and Angela. But like the chef's table, which I, I don't think is considered outdoor seating because it's under a porch, is so loud and, you know, we have to have white noise on to sleep, to get to sleep. And it's until, it's till one in the morning. So like I think a ten o'clock curfew, if there is going to be outdoor seating in the front, I mean, it, it's got to stop at, at ten, like no outdoor TVs. First of all, I think the outdoor TVs are hideous. It's just, it's not Nantucket and it's not necessary. It's like a sports bar outside. It's just not in keeping with the charm of Nantucket. And just, you know, outdoor, outdoor live music, like you can, we can hear the starlight. We can hear the bass at Ventuno, you know, till one in the morning. It's the bass. I mean, it, it rocks, it rocks the room. It's boom, 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 all, you know, it's like, and they're in, within their curfew, but it's, it's just really, to have it, to have it even closer is, I understand, we live downtown. I'm a merchant. I love, I love my fellow merchants. But I think there should be just restrictions about what's, what's allowable and what's not, and, and the noise. So appreciate, if you would look through that letter when, when you make suggestions or conditions for outdoor seating that you really consider just the noise, we would really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
And then we also have a concern about with the increase of restaurants is the garbage. What's, what's the plan to put the garbage? Where are they going to put it? Is it going to affect us or Cielo's property, the smell and stuff and the bottles?
Is a problem. The garbage, the garbage right now is a problem.
Dumping, dumping bottles, the noise of dumping bottles and, and things like that.
I mean, we have, we have flycatchers because the garbage is like overflowing in the back of their yard and the, you know, it's, it's, it's gross.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else here who'd like to speak? I think we're going to, Nat, you suggested continuing the public hearing. I, I think from the additional work that's needed, that makes a lot of sense. Is that agreeable to you?
Yeah, we need to give Sarah a little bit of direction now before we do that.
Yeah, you need, give me some direction. I wanted to have Terry Sanford say a few things. I just, before he does though, I just want to mention, Matt and I did the permitting for proprietors. And we can certainly go back and look at what we did to make it quiet and all the things that make it a good neighbor. I mean, I can't stress enough the difference between what's happening with the, we're not having any live music to start with, but what's happening with all that thrumping and that's not going to be happening here because, specifically because of all the onsite hotel guests. And certainly no outdoor TV, right, Terry? No outdoor TV? I wouldn't be part of a project with an outdoor TV. I just have to say that right now.
Terry Sanford with Eleven India Street and Blue Flag Development. I'm one of the principals as an applicant. So I just want to give a little additional context sort of to, to what we're trying to do and what our goals are and put in perspective, I think, some of the things that have, that have come up tonight. So we've recently, you know, acquired the property and, you know, our, our vision for the site is really to bring it back to its glory. I think the, the previous owners owned it for about fifteen years, oversaw the, the expansion of the gatehouse. But to, to a great extent, they just sort of left the building and, and left what was happening across the site. They're, they're a little bit absentee owners and I think if you talk to any of the retail tenants or the restaurant tenants that are there today, they'll tell you that and that, that's a, a source of frustration for them. You know, our, our hope is to really sort of revitalize this corner of Center Street and, and make it alive and make it beautiful. You know, the first part of this process was, was coming in and looking at the buildings. And what we came across was that the meeting house building was in, in pretty significant disrepair from top to bottom, whether it's the, the retail space, the existing restaurant spaces or the hotel rooms. And we even found like the, some of the hotel rooms in this building have shared baths and they were being used as for employee housing and some, some things that weren't, that, that aren't befitting of, of what the property and the, the site ought to be. So, you know, our, our bigger goal is to come back and, and really put this thing back the way it should be. You know, to put professional management in place to control the thing holistically. You know, right now you've got the restaurant, both restaurant entities are third party, which leaves the hotel without a lot of control about things like trash and, and noise and those things. So beyond that, in, in, in doing the sort of, you know, renovation and putting this building back to where we'd like to see it fit, we wanted to make sure the use was consistent with the property as a whole. So, you know, delivering a three-course restaurant that we'd like to run year round ties directly to, to being able to house, you know, a hundred and twenty guests onsite. The, the retail that was there, you know, there will continue to be retail on the site. The retail that's going away is about a thousand square feet. It's not of great significance of the retail space that exists on Center Street. We are talking about some change of use, but again, the, the expansion of the property is about two hundred and forty square feet. So in terms of intensity of use and things like that, we're not proposing anything that is going to result in some drastic change. And Sarah said a couple of times, you know, in terms of the restaurant use, you know, obviously I think that's the biggest concern we've heard from neighbors and even from some of the questions from the board tonight. I, I can't say it strongly enough that we, you know, we've got sixty hotel rooms. That is the primary source of revenue for this site. That will remain indefinitely. And so we have a bigger incentive than a proprietor's or a boarding house or a company in the cauldron, which are all restaurants in the immediate vicinity to controlling that noise. We fully expect we may well end up with some good conditions. We're familiar with the history of the Grayden House Restaurant. I would ask the board to consider to take a light touch. I'd, I'd much prefer to be able to put this operation in place and figure out how to make it work as a, as a year-round restaurant. If we have problems, which again, I think I am more incentivized to fix than anybody in this room, you know, we're happy to come back and, and talk about those and address them. And if there, if there are things we are not doing well, to have constraints implemented at, at that point. So I, I, I think that's it. And, and the one last thing I'll say is that of the two neighbors who spoke tonight, I, I reached out to both of them proposing to have a conversation prior to this meeting. Both prepared to have the conversation in the public setting, which is great. But I think we heard some specific concerns, which, you know, are easy enough to address in terms of how we treat the site plan or how we lay out seating. And the last thing I'll say is, because again, I think hot button is outdoor seating. You know, again, this is the heart of the commercial district. And if there's not a location that's appropriate for a restaurant or retail uses or outdoor seating in, on the island, I don't know where it is. So I think, again, we're, we're incentivized to keep that control and run a very tight ship. But in terms of the proposed use, we're not talking about really intensifying the site, nor are we doing anything that I think is inappropriate for the location, the zoning, or the immediate neighbors.
Thank you. Okay, I think we need a motion to continue until July instead, or do you think August?
If you can give us just a little, I think if you want to, you want to see, obviously sheet one of two. My fault. And you want to see drainage, lighting, landscaping.
Where's the front seating? And there it says patio area?
Yes.
That little in the, in the diagram? Okay, okay. Is that seating for restaurant service? Or is that seating for like sort of gathering, you know, coffee and that kind of thing? I mean, just asking.
Terry.
Terry, can you answer that? Terry, sorry. The front seating on Center Street, is that intended for, for ser, for restaurant service?
Yeah, I think that's the idea. I mean, to be perfectly honest, we haven't done a full seating plan to lay out a final thing and we'll want an operator to weigh in heavily on that. But, you know, we want to understand what we're permitting and what can be done here before we lay out an operational plan for it. But yeah, I think, I mean, in general, you see on this plan sort of carved out a square shape off what would be the new porch of the building.
Yeah.
And that is intended to be outdoor seating. Yeah.
Because the way the trash works, I don't need to jump around, but the way the trash works down there is all by hand.
Yes.
Everything's by hand, which is fine, you know.
The, the.
But there's no way you're going to roll a dumpster out of there, out to the, out to India, AKA Pearl Street or Center Street too easily. So you're going to have to be, I, I, what they mentioned in their letter about dumping glass, that's actually a good one. I don't know if we've ever had anyone actually say that, but that's a good point. When people that are just working for a living, doing the best they can, when they take one of those big blue barrels and dump all the bottles at one o'clock in the morning, that is worse than thumping.
Well, like I said, yeah, no.
I'd rather hear the bass than that.
Like I said, I think we've got more guests sleeping in closer proximity.
So you don't want, so you have an incentive to not let noise happen.
Exactly. We have a direct financial incentive to make sure that this thing is run very tightly and it's as minimally disruptive than any other restaurant within, again, all, all these butters, we're, we're surrounded by restaurants.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, again, our, our, our position is we already come into this like from their perspective. So we want, we, we'd like to be as unconstrained as possible because we want to go out and make this thing work and, and do it as a year-round business. And we don't know exactly what those, you know, what we're going to need and what we're not going to need. But in terms of, again, being good neighbors and mindful of the noise, it's, we're going to get the calls first. So.
Yeah. And again, a special permit is not by right. This isn't the summer house. You know, this is like, all the new stuff has way more conditions than the old stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
So the other thing about outside seating, every restaurant has basically added outside seating over the last quarter century. I mean, and they're getting fancier and their permanent structures, what they have at American Seasons is permanent, what they have at Dune is permanent. And it's, right, and, and essentially, it's the show of the seasons that created this. This isn't something that, oh, we did it fifty years ago. No, nobody was here after September first then, you know? So it's all about figuring out a way to, to earn a living on the weekends and the off-season. So, you know, I like your idea about, about just the slow step you've mentioned. I mean, it's important because it all has to develop itself, has to create its own entity. People get used to certain things. You know, we've changed this, I listed a bunch of restaurants that don't even exist anymore. And Water Street's not open this year. You know, so restaurants ebb and flow, just like the cars. We've been looking for parking for fifty years. We still don't have it. Now the airport's on straight off. So I don't know what to tell you, but there's no way to really fix any of that. So with that said, I mean.
So landscape plan, drainage, lighting.
Noise.
And noise, noise.
And I think maybe you covered this, but I think on the noise front, it would be very helpful to know where the seating's going to be if there's outdoor seating particularly.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
And I just suggest, Sarah, just in terms of the list, go right down the MCD guidelines, and then use that submitted to staff with respect to what's included and what's not, or what's going to be submitted secondarily. And then, just with respect to the seating plan, is, you know, you may have different operational, I know you don't have an operations plan yet, it's premature, but you may be proposing certain uses in certain areas and not in others, and it may be beneficial, it certainly would be beneficial for us, and perhaps for you, for the neighbors to understand specifically what you're proposing to use those outdoor areas for.
Okay.
And what the hours are. And it will clean up discussion, I think, here at the table. Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. Anybody else?
What you're willing to change and reduce and...
Maybe some hours of operation, that kind of thing.
Yes, outside, different hours, that kind of thing.
Any other requests from anybody who hasn't spoken? Okay. Then, did we vote already to continue?
No.
Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to continue.
Did you prefer July or August?
July.
July, yeah. July 8th. Make a motion to continue to July 8th.
Although, that's a tight turnaround, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Today's, today's the...
And the rate time is going.
Yeah.
It's got the 4th of July in there.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion to continue?
I'll second it.
Dave, second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Other public comments? Then, we've got a couple of other things here. We need to reaffirm our vote to first nominate John Trudell as our representative to the Community Preservation Commission.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to reaffirm.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And second to reaffirm Dave Iverson for the Cannabis Advisory Committee.
I'll make that motion to reaffirm David for that.
Any second, please?
Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The Cannabis Commission.
Cannabis, not the Coastal.
Right.
Cannabis Commission for Dave. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fritz, did you want to volunteer for the Coastal Yozansky?
I guess, yes, everybody else is.
Are you the person on that for staff, or I shouldn't say officially, but...
Well, I've been asked to be involved, yes, yes.
So, I thought, I just want to make sure. What is your thought on this, as far as how fast is this thing going to be? I know there's a lot of things going on, but...
Well, see, I know the select board is looking for guidance.
I know. Get me started.
There's a lot of good stuff going on, so this board is necessary.
I think they, I think they're making their appointments the 19th.
Yes.
So, I have the understanding they're also hoping to hire someone, so I think it's moving forward.
Crazy.
Yeah. I'd love to volunteer.
Okay.
Do you want to do it, Fritz?
No, I don't. Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll make that motion for Fritz to be the Coastal Yozansky for the planning board.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Next one, we're going to have a special planning board meeting the 24th of June, and you'll remember, we invited folks to talk about, to send in their thoughts, or to be prepared to discuss ways that we can improve our processes. One of the things that Leslie and Andrew and I had talked about too would be to have the possibility of quarterly, like, workshop meetings, where we could get started on things like the Articles for Town Meeting. Could also include things like starting the work on the comprehensive master planning process and things like that. So, that'll be an important meeting, and hope folks are able to attend. After that, July the 8th. But now, we need to have an executive session. That means we have to text the famous people with the TV, and then we have to vote, each of us to go into executive session, and somebody needs to read the motion that is set out there and move that we go into executive session.
Madam Chair, we're still waiting on the video to be shut off.
Okay.
Can I, deep down some maritime and ask a question organizational?
Sure. And I just have to say, we need to make this motion while we are in public session.
Yes.
So...
You want me to make that motion? I'll read it.
I can't read it.
I, but let's, let's first, Steve, you have a...
Just very quickly, I just wanted to check if it is, great, we can discuss it then. If not, it's no more need be said. But there was discussion earlier when I got here, that there's some talk of a report that indicates that the alternates, the number of alternates for the planning board should be reduced, and I don't know if that's accurate. I don't know if it is or isn't, but if it's part of the organizational, I just wanted to ask so we were prepared to talk about it.
I've not heard of that.
Doesn't sound like it's on the agenda, so I'll leave it at that.
That wasn't in the NOVAC report, right?
No.
Okay.
We love our alternates. We need you. See, we, all of you worked tonight, so how could we possibly dispense with our...
Exactly.
Fine, I just, I heard it earlier, so I thought I'd ask, because we were having the organizational meeting.
To me, because I have read it in a report that was online on the town website.
We have at times had difficulty filling three seats.
Yeah, that's different.
So, there could be something floating around in some document, just because we're not at it.
There's a million reasons to leave three.
But I don't think there's any intention to strategically go down from three.
Right, and I wasn't looking to get the rumor mill started or anything.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Leslie, just, the light's still on, but I think we could make the motion to go into executive session in open session, then we'll have to stifle ourselves till the red light goes off. So, Nat, can you see that?
Yeah, I can see it. So, the board may entertain a motion to go into executive session under GL 38, 2183, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation, which are known to Town and Nantucket versus Lewis, Nantucket Trust, 130 Pleasant Street, because an open meeting discussion may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board and the chair.
And I so declare, yes.
So, that's my motion.
Can you just make a comment?
Did you get it?
You may want to add, and to not go back into open session.
And we won't be going back into open session tonight.
Thank you, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We have to, I think we have to do it one by one.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Say, say your name, so she gets...
David Iverson.
Aye.
Nat.
Nat Lowell, aye.
Judith Wagner, aye.
Fritz McClure, aye. That is, someone needs four.
And do our alternates have to leave?
We haven't done this in a while.
They don't have to leave.
I mean, we don't mind.
Why not just let them go?
Yeah, let them go.
Vote.
Vote, okay.
See, well.
Aye.
Weidara Zola, aye.
And we would keep...